...a June 29, 2016. Councilmember Chapman, your prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star-Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on Bolton Board the same date. All notices are on file in the city clerk. Next item is a presentation of a proclamation to Mount Carmel Church. Whereas, the first playground for Our Lady of Mount Carmel School was built by over seventy-five long years, and members of the city and school families are new to it in 2016. And whereas, the playground is donated by our family and children. My vote, under the town of New York City, to create a town foundation, which donates three playgrounds in the United States and in school every year, in memory of their daughter, Alexandra, who died in 2008 at the age of three. And whereas, Alexandra's playground is dedicated to creating opportunities for safe, active play for children, and building awareness about the importance of place that children play creatively and safely. And whereas, since establishment in 1923, Our Lady of Mount Carmel has never had a playground. The Catholic school has over two hundred twenty students in kindergarten. As the beginning players of Mount Carmel are very ready to play throughout the death of the Catholic opportunity for children, ninety-seven point five percent of students and students, or other students below the poverty line, and keep them protected from the graduates and new ones from high school in college. And whereas, this playground...
I also am very thankful and want to take the opportunity to thank Jackie, also helping us. We're doing the festival, so hopefully all of you know, six, seven, eight, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten. Jackie has been such a great help in putting this festival over there. And I thank you, Mayor, for allowing that to happen also.
Thank you.
If you guys have grabdy parts, and please, everybody attend and support, great cause.
Yeah, I just want to finish what you have. It should be said that Deputy Mayor Quinn was there going morning, and Councilwoman Clayton, and Mayor John Moore were there from eight-thirty morning, and that playground was built and dedicated at three o'clock. And I mean, they were working, they were full with dirt by the end of the day. And Mayor Moore said, I'll never forget, he said, "I had wonderful days here in Asbury, but this was a great day." Thanks again, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to matters from the city council.
I have a couple. You want to start first? Proclamation. This past week, Lou, how you pronounce his name, Pacilia?
Parisi.
Parisi, okay, I get names mixed up. Ed is ninety-first birthday, and I think that a proclamation also will be in order for him. I'd like the council to think about that. From the BFW, he had put a lot of time in, a good man, good-hearted man, and he thinks of the world of Asbury Park, so I'd like to think about, make a request for a proclamation for him. I also like to bring this to the council and city manager's attention. I can recall years ago, when I was in college, I used to run one of the biggest stores in Nebraska when I was attending the school. And one of the things that I did, and I got a lot of quality work out of the guys and people that worked there, was to have Employee of the Month. And I'd be in the city hall just about every day, and I see some good things going on, a lot of people working hard, and I'd like for us to consider this. I know I brought it up before, but it really haven't touched home yet, but I'd like for you to think about that, because it would help, I think it would, I think it'd be rewarding if you know that people care about you. And I have seen people step out on this, when they know that they're going to get an award, or they've been working for that goal. Just to picture off, whatever you want to think, whatever you want to do, city manager, mayor, and council, but I think it'd be rewarding for that. And I'm going to just save the rest for another time. Thank you.
Okay. We'd like to reactivate the Sunset Lake Commission. Sorry. So we'd like to reactivate the Sunset Lake Commission. All right, try it again. We'd like to reactivate the Sunset Lake Commission, and so we're looking for any residents who are interested in serving on that committee to submit applications to the city clerk, Cindy Dye. And we'll, I guess, have a two-week, two-week window for that opportunity, and hope to be able to plan a meeting in July. That's it. And the other thing I'd like to just acknowledge, Bob Stewart, the director of our Asbury Park Library, who just was recently given a prestigious award in Atlantic City as a remarkable librarian and library director, who has built a comprehensive and impressive body of preservation work at several institutions. Bob was also instrumental in creating the New Jersey Caucus Archival Programs Evaluation Service, which is, it's an important service that the State Historical Commission requires that organizations seeking funding for archival preservation activities must have a CAPE survey in order to qualify for funding. And Bob was instrumental in bringing that caucus to New Jersey and getting that passed. That's it.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out Monday night for the first concert in the new Springwood Avenue Park. It was a great time, people were dancing on the stage, we had a wonderful evening. There are going to be concerts every Monday night from now through August, so please come out, different genre of music, so you'll have an opportunity to find something that you'll enjoy. And just come out and share the time with us, we'll all have a lot of fun together.
So I just have two things. I wanted to give credit to the three Asbury bars that raised money for the Orlando victims, and that's Paradise, Tides, and Georgies, who held a fundraiser in a very, very short period of time after the shooting in Orlando to provide some support for the survivors and victims of Orlando, and in one night raised over $22,000 with less than a week to plan the event. So I think that is a testament to the community in Asbury Park, and I couldn't be more proud to be from a town that was able to send up $22,000. The other thing the city is working on doing to also show some support to Orlando is we are working with an organization called Sunshine Girls, which is located in Manasuan. The woman who runs it is Jacqueline Klosick, and I may be saying her name wrong. They are donating forty-nine trees and plaques to the city, where the city is going to put up plaques in the name of the forty-nine victims that were killed in Orlando, probably not till September. So the city and the Environmental Commission are working together to figure out where to put those trees and how we do it. So that's coming down the pike as well. This is no, obviously, this is to no cost to the city, right? These are all donations and volunteers. That's it.
Okay. I don't think the microphone's working, hopefully you can hear me. On June 18th, we had the opening of the park, and it was dedicated, so that was also a great day in Asbury. And then yesterday, we found out that we received a $500,000 grant from the federal government in conjunction with the Housing Authority, which is, it was a very competitive and very desirable grant, I think ten throughout the country. I'm going to have Michelle Alonso give a brief explanation about what this does for it and how we move forward, and this was a great win for the city.
All right, good evening. This was a grant that this council authorized, authorized us to, in conjunction with the Housing Authority, to apply for...
Last January, this is a very competitive HUD grant, it's called Choice Neighborhoods. Only ten municipalities in the country are awarded this grant, and we received a $500,000 planning grant, and the neighborhood chosen was the West Side neighborhood. This is different than some other planning grants, in that it looks at planning not only on the land use perspective, but as holistic redevelopment, and that includes workforce development, affordable housing, and health initiatives. Also, the very important part of this grant as well is if we succeed and do very well with the implementation, we are able to apply for 1.5 million implementation grant. And that's, of course, to put into motion what the, what the planning report is going to, not only the planning report, but also some of our initial activities. We have many partners in this grant. Many different organizations, both in Asbury Park and the neighborhood and Monmouth County, teamed up with us to apply for this grant, and they were expected to be partners in offering services in order to do, again, do more than bricks and mortar in terms of redevelopment. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me explain this. I was, as a planner, of course, I was very excited, and I have to say I'd applied for this grant in my previous position with Newark and did not get it. So I am more than excited that we, you know, we're one of ten in the nation to get it.
Thank you for the hard work.
I have one other thing, Michael, just, and I should have brought it up earlier, Wi-Fi on the beach, right? We've been talking about that well before your time, Madison Marquette's working on it, working on it, working on it, it goes nowhere. Can we get a hard deadline on the free Wi-Fi on the beach?
Move on to matters from the city manager. The first matter is special events.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight, there are three special events. One is the annual Fourth of July fireworks, hosted by Asbury Partners on the Fourth of July with a rain date of July 8th. The hours of that event are from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The second application is the opening of the Asbury on July 7th with a rain date of July 14th. Those hours are also 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There will also be fireworks involved with that event. Both events have been reviewed by staff for the fireworks and have met all requirements. And lastly is the Budweiser Clydesdale Jersey Shore Tour, which will also be on July 7th from 3:00 PM through 5:00 PM. This is being hosted by the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, and I'll ask Ms. Pappas if she wants to speak a little bit about that, since it is such an interesting and unique event that is being done by Chamber. Jackie did fantastic work on getting the Clydesdales here. But those are the three events for your consideration tonight. Thank you. You want to say anything?
Sure. We can find all the information on the Chamber website, but it's the first time in fifteen years that the Clydesdales return to the Jersey Shore, and they actually requested to come to Asbury Park first. So we will be there opening acts, so it's a really fun, traditional, although obviously it's from a beverage sponsor, it's a very fun, traditional, family-friendly type of tour. So if you can imagine these huge, wonderful horses and the Dalmatians that go with them, they'll be traveling roughly the same rate as, the same way as the Asbury Park St. Patrick's Day Parade, it's a little less than a mile. It starts down at the Ford Block at the Blue's, and will slowly make its way down Ocean Avenue, and then down Cookman Avenue, and finishing off right in front of city halls. If you have small children or adults of all ages, you're welcome to come, and then you can stop, since they continue all the facilities, it's really very iconic, they travel across the country, and in fact, they'll stop in New Jersey, they're making such stops, they hold them on the side of this, and also say this has a great... So please do come out and have some fun that day, it's one of the many amazing things going on on that day. So thank you for allowing them to be here with us.
Next item is DL Drive Parking.
Thank you. The Parking Committee has requested for the city staff to review parking along DL Lake Drive Avenue areas. Part of this goes on to DOT property and right-of-way by Main Street. The next meeting, you'll have a formal recommendation. We'll send out some informal notices, the engineer design, the police reports in the next week or two, but I just wanted to be aware that this is going to be on everyone's radar for the next, for the next meeting. That's all.
Move on to matters from the city attorney. He has summer rental ordinance revisions.
Yes, Council, there was an ordinance in your packets, and it's on the agenda for potential first reading this evening, that would modify the city's existing summer CFO ordinance. And I'm bringing this forward at the request of the Director of Property Improvement and the Zoning Officer. The summer CO or summer rental ordinance was adopted back in 2014, it was Ordinance 3062. It's now codified in Section 12-8 of the City Code. The intention was essentially to soften the requirements associated with the Building and Construction Chapter of the City Code, that requires the city to conduct an inspection and issue a new certificate of occupancy prior to the new occupancy of any dwelling unit in the city, including a transfer of title or a new rental tenancy. Technically, the code requires this, whether the occupancy is temporary, seasonal, or permanent. So for each new occupancy, an inspection is required to ensure compliance with all aspects of the Property Maintenance Code, the presence of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, et cetera, and a new application for a CFO is required, and there's a $100 fee. That application for each new, is required for each new change in tenancy. As I indicated, in 2014, the council at that time adopted the summer rental ordinance, and the intention was to make it easier for homeowners in Asbury Park to rent their homes out during the limited time period between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and essentially to make Asbury Park a more desirable destination for summer visitors. Under the summer rental ordinance, if your property qualifies as that term "summer rental" is defined in the ordinance, then you can apply for a summer rental license for a flat fee of $250 and have one inspection performed, and then you would be eligible to rent out your home as many times as you wish between that period of Memorial Day and Labor Day, without having to undergo a new inspection and get a new CFO every time there's a change in tenancy. So the ordinance that was adopted in 2014 was modeled after one that I believe was in existence already in another short town, I believe it was Belmar. Since then, and as Asbury Park has become increasingly more popular, the number of property owners who are availing themselves of the summer rental ordinance has increased significantly, and according to the Director of Property Improvement and the Zoning Officer, this has caused a need to reevaluate some of the language contained in Section 12-8.1 of the Code where the term "summer rental" is defined. At current, the term "summer rental" is defined to mean residential properties rented by an owner or their agent for all or any portion of the time period between Memorial Day and Labor Day. That section further states that the term shall not apply to rooming houses or boarding houses, and additionally, that section shall not apply to apartment units. They were specifically excluded. The ordinance, however, does not define the term apartment units. Recently, the Director of Property Improvement and Zoning Officer have been receiving applicants from the owners of two-family homes, and also from the owners of multi-unit structures in the city, those that contain three units or more. And they're seeking some clarification from the council by way of a policy call and an amendment to the ordinance relating to these types of units. Specifically, a two-family home may not qualify to be considered a summer rental as at least one of the units would be an apartment, and apartments are specifically excluded from the definition of what constitutes a summer rental. But according to our staff, if the owner resides in one of the two units, they don't see why the other apartment unit could not be rented out as a summer rental. The language that is proposed would make it clear that this would be permitted. The proposed language would also make it clear that multifamily dwellings consisting of three or more units would not qualify, and the proposed language would also insert a requirement that in order for a residential property to be a summer rental, it must be the primary residence of the owner. And that comes from research that both the Director of Property Improvement and the Zoning Officer have performed relating to other municipalities that have gone in that direction in an effort to eliminate many of the issues relating to investors that are buying up properties and turning them into short-term rental units that are transient in nature with absentee landlords, and those types of situations then lead to zoning issues, nuisance overcrowding, parking, and whatnot. The language that is proposed in the new ordinance is shown with underline, nothing is coming out, just some new language is being put in, and this is the recommendation from city staff, the Director of Property Improvement and Zoning Officer, for your consideration. Ultimately, it's the council's call, and it is on for your consideration later on in the meeting, but I wanted to preface it by giving you a full background of where it came from before we got there.
Any other comments or questions?
And I'd just like to also indicate one last note, and that is that if your property doesn't qualify as a summer rental, you can still rent it out as many times as you want to during the course of the summer or during other times of the year, but you just don't get the benefit of the pay-one price, $250, and one inspection. Then you just have to pay your $100 and have an inspection done each and every time that you turn it over to new tenants.
And Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say you get the summer rental license, you rent it to a number of people over the summer, you still have to provide the city and the code department with how many tenants are in there for safety purposes, you know, what new people are coming, when they, all the things that we currently, you know, ask that you provide the code department.
That's correct. In the summer rental ordinance, even though the property owners get the benefit of the pay-one price and only one inspection, nevertheless, every time there is a new tenancy during the course of the summer, the property owner is affirmatively required under the ordinance to register the names and other pertinent information with the code enforcement department so as we can keep a roster of who's here for emergency, fire, and safety purposes, overcrowding, and whatnot.
Do you have any other matters, Fred?
This is just the first reading tonight of the ordinance, right?
It's listed for first reading. Again, it's at your discretion. It comes from Mr. McKeown and Ms. Van Wagner, and I was asked to present it to you this evening for your consideration.
We'll now move on to public participation.
Here's a question. Since we didn't have the workshop meeting, so we didn't ask questions about the agenda, which, should we do that now, or should we just wait for them to come up and ask the questions, move second, then ask the questions then? I don't care. How do you want to do it?
Is there anything that you have questions on, on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, then we can do it at the time for each individual resolution. We only have a couple matters on the consent agenda. We have the business committee, special events, payroll...
Nope, nope, we'll get on pause.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, then?
No, but...
Favor, all opposed. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you speak.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I happened to attend the governor's conference yesterday, and he started to talk about the Abbott districts, which is a very serious question, and we're one of them. And he said that we can no longer continue giving the Abbott districts all the money we're giving them. Asbury happens to only pay 26% of their taxes to the school. I'm really concerned about this, because this is really going to affect us, affect taxpayers, plus the fact we have all the pilot programs that do not pay school tax. So all this is being taken into consideration, but I think it's something that the city management better start thinking about. Also, in one of the articles, it said that we were 64% higher than the average as far as our budgets are concerned. In other words, our budget is bloated, so we have to do something about that. 64% is very, very high. The other thing is that we, they said that we had 577 school districts, and there's only 565 municipalities. So there's something that's going to be done, and we better start thinking about it soon, because we are an Abbott district, and people are tired of giving money to Abbott districts. There was over 300 people there yesterday, all screaming and yelling about Asbury Park and other districts, that get all this money and see no results. So we have to start thinking about that, because it's going to happen. If it's not this year, it's going to be next year. So let's think about it. The other thing I wanted to, I read the ordinance, which is unusual for me to read the whole thing, about the set-ices, and I called Cindy about it. The set-icide was for minorities, women, veterans, and small business. But then, when you read the ordinance, it doesn't say anything about veterans and small business. So I want the city manager to answer that, because I understand he wrote the ordinance about that. And the other thing is, I want them to put definitions. What is a minority? Because if you look at the census from 2010, 51% were black in Asbury, 36% was white, and 25% was Hispanic. So how do, what does the word minority mean? I think you should put that in the ordinance. I don't know. I know the ordinance passed last week, but I think we're in within the 20 days to have it corrected. So what are we going to do about that? I want to know who the minority is in this situation. So, that's it.
Answer the ordinance first.
The set-aside ordinance defines minorities at the state level, which is women, whatever the minority population is, which is in this case, everyone but white, black, Hispanic, Asian, et cetera. It didn't, under this proposed ordinance, under the change ordinance, it didn't require a set amount. For example, women are aimed at 10%. This is the first time in the city's history that I've understood that we're actually taking the ordinance seriously and trying to make it much more palatable to give businesses across the board, to give business and of city contracts across the board. So how it's going to be implemented is more important than the definitions, because it's going to go to a wide spectrum of everyone anyway. It's how it's bid, not the definition, because the way the ordinance is written is it's going to be bid based upon the state registration, which is a database. So if you're in that database, you get the notification anyway. So if we went to hire a conflict interest attorney, that database would then be searched, everyone gets it who's notified, doesn't matter who you are. The goal of the ordinance was to allow for everyone to have an equal opportunity with then certain amount of percentages to be awarded. Right now, we're not even close to doing the analysis of what and who should be getting targeted, so that's why we did it this way. It's really going to take some time to review all the contracts that the city has in order to target where to go. So the first... So the first goal is to not worry about the definitions. It's actually to hit a broad swath of everyone who's registered in the state database. And we implore everyone to register for that state database, I'm sorry, the sun's right in my face, is so that they get notified. Not only is it on the website, but then there'll be a solicitation for contracts that the city offers for everyone to bid on, and that's the key. It's going to be a moving change in the ordinance as time goes on. So I understand your concern, it's a valid point, but the definitions are going to change, the target's going to be recommended to change. We actually have to see what's out there first because it's never been done before.
But don't you have to change the ordinance? You don't have a percentage for small business or veterans.
No, because we kept it from the original ordinance, and that's, we don't know who's going to apply for what, so it's going to be out to everyone. Until we can actually see who's applying, who's applying where for what project, that's step two. Step one is we actually have to identify what we're bidding out in order to target everyone. So it's going to take some time to get it right, but the previous ordinance didn't actually let us get it right. This now will let us bid out things in a more inclusive manner. And it's going to take some time because what actually first has to happen is the city staff has to review the contracts that will be up for bid and procured and how to target populations. So the state has a database that we're going to be using to reach out to everyone who's on that database. So if we, if Fred resigned tomorrow as city attorney and we needed to look for a new attorney, we would solicit from all those attorneys in that database, and that database covers everybody. So until we can find, one, what contracts we need to bid out, what procurement on construction projects need to be done, until we start identifying that, we're not going to be able to change any of the figures, so we really just left them alone because we didn't know at this time. But this ordinance, I anticipate changing in the next 18 months to 24 months once we started rolling. But we don't know yet because it's never been done.
I know, but why did you put a percentage for the first?
Because that's the way the old ordinance was, and we just kept it the same because, now, the first way you had it was good. Now you just blinded me. Thank you. Because we just kept it the same, that's all. And as we continue along the process, we're going to have to make some changes, we know that, but it's the first time this has ever been done.
Okay. I have one more thing. I know the buzzer went off. But in the code book, it said that, I don't know, the code book has been changed now, so this might have been taken out, that nobody could take a vacation in a city employee during the May 30 Memorial Day weekend and Labor Day. Is that still a rule? That was in the code book.
That sounds personnel policy, that doesn't sound like code.
What?
Might have been in union.
Because we're a reasonable area.
It might have been in union contracts.
No.
It wasn't the blue, it wasn't the blue and white contract. I was present, it wasn't that. If it was in the code, we don't have the answer, we'll get back to you.
What?
We don't, we can't answer that right now. We don't have the code in front of us, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
As far as your worries about the school and everything, I appreciate them. I think the entire state is worrying about the Abbott districts. The governor does not have the power to change the Abbott districts. He may think he does, but he does not. It was a Supreme Court decision of New Jersey. We're all concerned about a 23 cent gasoline tax. This council has been, I think, the most fiscally responsible one in decades. We're looking at everything. We do not understand how he wants to reduce the sales tax from 7% to 6%, which would mean $1.4 billion lost revenue every year. You've got to make that up with taxes someplace. So yes, we are keeping our eyes on everything. We are looking, not this year, if we're looking at this year's budget, we're in trouble. We're looking at future year's budget, and we're looking at everything in the newspapers just as you are. So we are on top of it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Ryan. I live at 503 6th Avenue in Asbury Park. A couple of issues regarding the beach. One is something I've been waiting for you guys to do, and you have it, is I think it's time for some no-smoking beaches. I think you could easily put in an ordinance that makes something like the odd beaches smoking beaches, the even beaches non-smoking beaches, because it's a bitch when you sit there and all of a sudden somebody's got a cigar and it blows upwind on you when you're sitting there. So it would be easy to do. I don't know why you haven't done it, I think you should do it. Also, beaches, the dog beach. I think there's something that you guys need to consider in terms of ordinances and rules that it should be something that provides the most lenient, the most open, the least restrictive, the most accommodating for the most people. Frankly, I think the dog beach ought to be open 24 hours a day. Not the least of which is you might want to consider that if you have the dog beach open during the day, you can charge a fee for dogs. Dogs may need to have a dog pass just like people need to have a dog pass, which might bring some revenue. But in the meantime, if you go down there in the morning and you see at 8:30, there's 20, 30 people and dogs having a wonderful time, and at 8:31, it's totally vacant, that it's empty, that minimally you need to extend the time for people to be there because you're supposed to be accommodating the most people that you can. The other issue is, I'm delighted that you are doing something about Sunset Lake. Please put every ounce of energy you have into Sunset Lake because it is in the middle of this town. When you drive into town, when you go to the convention center, you go right by Sunset Lake, that absolutely stinks. So something has to be done seriously with some money probably behind it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Warner Baumgartner. Eileen, I really appreciate your comments about Mr. Stewart, our library director. And as the president of the library board, I thank you, and I also concur that he is well-deserved of the award that he received. If it were not for Mr. Stewart over the last 30 years or so, I probably would not have had the encouragement to start the historical society and become city historian and preserve many city records for future posterity. So he's been a good mentor to me, and he's been a great person for Asbury Park to keep the library going under hard times. So thank you for mentioning him. It's not, often people think about the library. As far as Sunset Lake, put me down. I'm going to pick up an application. I've lived across from Sunset Lake for over 30 years, and I'm always over there picking up trash and pruning the trees and taking care of my little view corridor in front of my house, so I'd be happy to serve on such a commission and get things going. The third item is recall Kennedy Park and the sliver of Kennedy Park that was sold off to become a parking lot. My question regarding that is, why is it still unimproved? My understanding is that developers are required to improve their lots, to make them parking lots, that is pave them properly, grade them, landscape them. This is still a pile of gravel where cars are parking, and people are actually parking in the public right-of-way. They're taking up about six extra spaces that probably should be landscaped with at least a lawn and some kind of a decorative berm as required by the other developments on Lake Avenue down there. So perhaps someone can comment on what the status of that sliver of property is and why it's in the condition it's in? That's it.
Honestly, I don't know why it hasn't been improved, but we'll look into it, and I'll either send you an email or report back in the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
I can also indicate that although the transaction has been approved by the mayor council, the actual closing hasn't happened yet. There's a redevelopment agreement associated with this, and there are some steps that still have to be finalized in order for the closing to take place.
Interesting.
Warner, I'd like to report back that it hasn't been closed upon yet, and they don't have to do it.
Okay. Well, that begs the question, then, why are they being permitted to use it for parking if the deal has not been consummated yet? Something else that probably should be addressed. Maybe it might encourage them to get the deal done if they were prohibited from using it as a parking lot, which they're doing currently, and taking public property, encroaching on a public right-of-way in doing so. All right, thank you very much. I'll pick up an application for the Sunset Lake thing.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Ernest McNolly, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Sandtander. I was here at the last meeting, and I'm here again at this meeting, expressing concern for the activities in Asbury Park between the hours of 10:00 PM and 3:00 AM. I'd like to come out, observe, try and help as a citizen to document and to support our police department that I feel are endangered by scores, thousands of people that come here, at least in my observation and opinion, for one sole purpose, and that's for the overconsumption of alcohol, maybe mixed with drugs and violence. Last weekend, one person put another one through Conover's plate glass window, and I happened to witness the heroic efforts of the Asbury Park Police control and contain that situation, but I just feel that it's untenable, that they have to constantly be placed in a position where the city condones and invites people in for the reason to literally break the law, and yet they expect the police to somehow curtail, contain, and keep citizens safe. So it's, in my opinion, not a tenable situation. The papers are reporting it. We just had a, an article in the Coaster come out about the statistics of crime arrests, weapons, drugs, and other violent crimes. If, in fact, you Google the FBI statistics, Asbury is considered in the top 10 most violent, dangerous places in New Jersey. I know when I put that out, everyone says that I'm mean-spirited, I hate Asbury, and I hate police, and I hate everyone else, but they're FBI statistics. And they were quite concerning. I mean, 1,200-plus arrests, 48 weapons, drugs, vehicles impounded, and in my opinion, living here 10 years, this happens between 10:00 PM and 3:00 AM at will. It's, someone has to step in and protect us all. There's children involved, there's noise being made, there's property being destroyed, over-serving taking place. There's no parking for businesses that have been approved to bring in 1,000 or 2,000 customers. They park on curbs, they park in crosswalks, they endanger people. I was almost run down by someone in the crosswalk, and if you follow the correlation with the national news, Asbury's primed for some serious events, and not to mention all the lawsuits we already have for boardwalk problems and et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Moreau Avenue. I wanted first congratulate the city on the grant and let everybody know that these grants are hard to obtain, but we make sure we come together as a community to actually facilitate what the principles are by having these community outreach meetings and reaching some serious agenda issues that we can actually come forth and reach some goals. I had a strange phone call. I tell people about stuff that gets emailed to me, and it was a flyer about recreation for kids with Monmouth County. And I was eating somewhere, and I asked a young lady that I knew, did she have children? Because, I mean, her conversate. And I said, "Did you know about this camp? It's only three days, $30." And, well, she said she couldn't afford it, so I said I was going to sponsor, so I called up, and it's for, it was for Asbury, a group of Asbury kids, and the person told me on the phone they canceled it because only one person applied for it. And they get that regularly out of Asbury, and this is in Monmouth County. So I'm wondering, are we really getting out and reaching these families on these terrific outdoor projects they have? And I saw this at the library. Monmouth County has a lot of, a lot of things, and, you know, how are we integrating ourselves with it? You know, I'm not blaming the council, I'm not blaming anybody, just for one person, and it was only 12 slots, only one person show up, they had to cancel the thing where I think a bunch of kids would have had a great time with this extreme sports or biking or whatever it was. Also, I don't know if we can talk about, it says on there about a litigation on a tax lien, you're talking about executive session. I don't know if you're allowed to talk. I think I may know about this litigation, which I brought up, devilling with some other issues. And, and the vacant property, I mean, not the rental property, are any properties being taken out of the original ordinance of what is going to be considered as summer rental properties? That's it.
I'd like to answer the recreation part. As of yesterday, we had over 100 children sign up for recreation, and we're getting more in each day. So the program is moving along successfully.
I'm just saying, are we reaching, you know, like I said, this, this thing was like canceled now because only one person, when they had 12 slots.
We have a list of activities that we came up with earlier this year, and I believe you can get more, find one over there, and if you think it need to be added, just call Alicia Floyd tomorrow and suggest it to the council, the Recreation Committee.
As far as the summer rental ordinance is concerned, the proposed change that has been brought forward is to clarify the definition of summer rentals so that it would apply only to residential properties which constitute the primary residence of the owners thereof and contain no more than two individual dwelling units. There's been no change to the other language that says that this section shall not apply to rooming houses or boarding houses and that it shall not apply to apartment units. It's just clarifying that those residences that are, would be eligible are those that constitute the primary residence of the owners and contain no more than two individual dwelling units, so that if you are in a multifamily dwelling that has three or more, it would, it would not be eligible.
Why would that not be eligible? Say you had a four, four apartment.
Well, because the original language of the ordinance said that this section shall not apply to apartment units. So if you're in a, if you have a dwelling that has that many units, some of them likely are apartments and would be disqualified anyway. But it's just a further clarification that the intent here is such that if you are in a two-family structure and the owner occupies one of them, that it would be permissible to summer rent out the other, the other premise, the apartment that's in the two-family unit because theoretically, the owner is there on site and can oversee what's taking place, so you're not dealing with an absentee landlord and that type of situation, and that's kind of the rationale that has been brought forward about why we should consider allowing an apartment if you're in a two-family unit, but not greater than that.
Good evening. My name is Karen Alexander. I live at 518 Asbury Avenue. I wanted to speak about an act of vandalism and violence that occurred in our neighborhood. On Saturday, not, well, technically Sunday morning, between 2:30 and, I believe, 3:40 AM, someone maliciously vandalized three vehicles parked on Emery Avenue in front of the Emery store, banging out, smashing out their back windows and their front windows, and on the van, the side windows, so many, and other vehicles. That's my neighbor, she was one of the victims, and I was in line, I heard, I was next. People did notify the police. It's not clear who called 911 or who called the police department directly, but the guy was able to continue his rampage. He even vandalized some cars down the street, and nobody showed up for 25 to 30 minutes later. The guy was gone, the damage was done, and the people were left devastated. All I heard in the morning was screaming and crying. Everybody works, these, all these people are working people. Everybody works. These, all these people are working people. They have no collision on several of the vehicles. It's liability only, and other people have, she just bought her car, so she had to have collision and liability. But she, as she was crying, she has to pay her deductible, and she has to take off a day from work because of some horrific thing that somebody did. I mean, they didn't get a very good response from the police department because they did inquire as to when they were going to come out and look at the video that the Emery Store had, and the owner allowed them to view the video. And it was a guy sitting there, apparently he was Latino, and he was on the phone, and he got off, and he just started beating everybody's vehicles up. And that's really scared, and it's disheartening. I know the police department has a lot to do, but that was something that needed to be taken care of. And when the people wanted a response the next day, they didn't get it right away. But talking about community, kind of banding together, people did stop by, and when they stopped by, they got out, they gave their condolences. It hurt everybody in the neighborhood to see something like that. I mean, that kind of violence is just totally unwarranted. Somebody just going that kind of crazy. And I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine if a person was out there walking down the street when this maniac was doing what he was doing. So I don't know what we can do as a community. I mean, these people had to pay the price. They had to come out of pocket. And it's still scary because we all look outside now. Our neighborhood was safe. We thought so. So I don't know how you could help.
Thank you. I read a little bit about it, so I'm not going to comment about it, but Mike was on vacation, but Chief Ketti, if you can give him some contact information where he can get in touch with you tomorrow, so we can follow up as far as the police response and everything else, and to give you the hard, the hard numbers, what time the phone call came in, when the police were there. Because what I read on one of the social medias was, it was some madman just going up and down the streets with a baseball bat, and the cops were looking for him, but he went this way to the police. So I, we don't know the facts, I don't know the facts, but whatever we know, if you give your contact information to Chief Ketti, he will get in touch with you to follow up on exactly what happened.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry it happened to you. It's just like, it's a crazy world. I mean, it is. Hold on one second, Jerry.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry. Okay. Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scranno, Long Grant. Mayor, thanks for bringing up about the gas act, but coming up 23 percent, 23 cents. Another reason why we need GPS and decals on all the vehicles, because it's hurting all of us. The other thing Rita was talking about, the governor with the Abbott District, he was saying that 31 municipalities in the Abbott District use $88 billion, and 500 municipalities plus use $97 billion. And he said, "That's why they're going to have to tweak it." He also brought up, like in Jersey City, you have people on the pilot program and tax abatement program paying the same amount of taxes for million-dollar views as people that live in poor neighborhoods in a normal house. He said, "The system's got to be straightened out about this giveaway," in so many words. The other thing is, because of the lawsuit with the splinters on the boardwalk, well, we may have to add the jellyfish and the dog shark that were on TV. That way, people enter at their own risk in the ocean, and we're not liable for that, because I never got paid for a splinter in my foot, and I'm sure everybody in this room never got paid for a splinter in their foot. The other thing is, we had something good happen today in Asbury, we have a lot, but the moving of that house should be exploited, showing that you can save historical buildings. They don't have to be demolished. You just need thinking out of the box and moving them, and we should make a big deal that we're doing it here. Even though only one house got saved and all the houses that got demolished, that would have been the thing to help us out. Okay, the thing is, the people that want to rent their houses, two-family even, the other apartment, I think that's going against affordable housing. But the other thing, if they're going to do Airbnb, I mean Airbnb, and maybe we should collect hotel taxes on them, because if they're going to run their house as a business, maybe their property tax should be different. You can't have it both ways. You can't skim off the top and not pay the piper. So if people want to register their houses for summer rentals like that, let them pay a higher tax than the neighbors that don't do it, because why should the neighbor put up with noisy people coming and going? It's just an idea that you can look into. I don't know if it's legal, but it's something to look into. So when are we getting decals on all the cars now?
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. All right, yeah.
I believe decals are on all the cars.
Not on all the cars.
All the cars except police and...
I can understand, understanding the coverage, but what about the city manager's car, the decal on it?
He doesn't have a car.
That's my personal car.
Oh, you didn't get one?
He doesn't have a car.
Okay, okay. You'll look into the Airbnb and the hotel tax thing because...
I know that the Director of Property Improvement is actually already looking into that, and I expect that there likely are going to be revisions to the code being brought forward at some point in the future to try to deal with that situation. Right now, this was the most urgent matter that we wanted to bring forward about the summer rental, but I know he's taken courses, and it's a new issue, obviously, that's come about in recent times, and towns are trying to deal with it. So I would expect that something will be brought forward about that topic sometime in, you know.
No, I'm glad you're looking at it forward. And what about the jellyfish and the dogfish that was on TV? Are you going to assign about that two to one, people? Because we, I mean, people
Karen, you know if you warn people, they can still sue you, right? It's not...
Well, I'm just saying, we're getting sued for a splinter, $32,000. I mean, it's just unbelievable, that kind of stuff. But thank you for your effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
My name is Lester Green. I live at 1224 and a half Monroe Avenue on the West Side. I have a question about the keeping up of vacant lots, especially on the West Side. And I want to, first of all, you know, in the process of like, you know, commend the people who work for the city, who I've been in contact many times. In fact, next door to me, and I own 1224 and a half, I own the house, it's a single-family house. Next door, there's a 1226, there's an abandoned building that's been abandoned over three years. And when I contacted the city people, the property, they said that, you know, about cleaning it up because like every, you know, the grass overloads, you know, dirt and everything like that. In fact, even the police, one time, they were there at night looking for somebody that had, threw something, the grass was so high, they couldn't even find what they were looking for, you know. And it's a safety hazard, not even for them, you know, looking for, you know, weapons or whatever else is going on. And I wonder if, you know, and how I get it done. Like, I'm, you know, be bugging people. I call up, you know, city or, you know, call the management and say, you know, "When can you come do this?" Is there any type of schedule as far as keeping up abandoned lots that, where owners have left the building, and this building is like, actually starting to fall apart? I know, you know, is there any type of schedule as far as like, ridding the neighborhood or that type of thing? Because like, I know, you know, the East Side's kept up much better than the West Side. And like, I bought on the West Side because I wanted to live on the West Side. In fact, you know, I moved from New York down here, I retire fire department. And it's important, I think, to, you know, as for, just for the communities, we talked about all these grants, other things, but how do you keep up the communities, especially communities that have, historically have a lot of issues? And like I said, it's a plight for me to see this, and I think something should be done as far as some type of ongoing thing. The city people themselves are good at doing it. I call them up, you know, but I have to keep calling people. But is there some type of schedule to keep these lots cleaned up and keep the grass cut? And if the building's been abandoned a number of times, it needs to be, you know, taken down or do whatever, because people can go in there, you know, squat, et cetera. But I think something needs to be done, and I want to know what's going on with that.
No, there isn't. And it's one of the big issues that we have in code enforcement, that they, there is no system in place. Code enforcement is the worst department when it comes to technology. This should be something that is simple to do. Yesterday, Mr. McEwing, the Director, met for the second time with the vendor, Geo3O Systems, of getting the software fine-tuned. We should have a software in place. We're hoping by the end of the summer, early fall, that we can actually do this more efficiently. We're short-staffed there right now. There's only two inspectors down from a height of five. We are hiring another inspector or two. It's posted on the website. But right now, I'll be honest with you, no, we don't, because we don't have, other than paper and pencil, a good way to do it. Big deficiency, we've talked about it before in the last six or seven months. We're working on fixing it to make it easier to, for the code staff to actually do this. While you were speaking, I just emailed the code director in Public Works to get out there and inspect the property tomorrow. So we know it's a major, major deficiency that we have there. Everything in that department is paper and pencil, and it drives me crazy. We're fixing it. It's going to take us some time, but the only way we're going to be able to get that is more, to be more efficient, since we're short-staffed there. So please, if you see it, call. It doesn't bother us. We'll get out there. Someone will be out there tomorrow.
But shouldn't, since we adopted abandoned property list, shouldn't this property be on that list if it's been three years?
I don't know if it's on the list.
Can we check that out and find out?
That's also in the email and...
Why it's not?
Well, if he pays his, I mean, as dilapidated as it, as it may be, and maybe it's a code hazard fire police issue, if he pays his taxes, he's not on the...
They can still be on the list. They have to file and make plans to fix it, or else we can start foreclosure on it.
Are you sure about that?
There, there are standards. There are standards to it, but we'll, we'll check. And as I mentioned previously in meetings here, we, once we get staff ramped up again and the software installed, we'll be able to, the goal is to be able to do another list, you know, September, October.
Okay, when you get the answer from Mr. McEwing, if you could just... Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Phyllis Mafucci, Deal Lake Drive, 510 Deal Lake Drive. I'm one of those people who applied for a summer CO about two weeks ago, and then I got a call on behalf of my client. And then I got a call from Barbara Van Wagner saying that it was a two-family and it was not allowed to be authorized as a summer CO. So what I'd like to ask is that the council please consider a two-family as one of those allowed to be a summer CO. I don't really see the difference in a single-family being an absentee owner. If you're renting out your house, you're leaving, and you're not there anyway, so you're already an absentee owner. I know that the summer, whole summer rental thing is new to Asbury Park. We don't want to become another Belmar and have, you know, a lot of disrupting in the evening. But I think if we follow the rules that what we've been doing so far with Belmar, they have what they call an animal house list, and if there have been three or more noise violations within 12 months, the owner has to put up a $4,000 bond, and that gets held by the city for four years. And they don't, they don't get that back for four years unless, if they've had other disturbances. So it helps keep, it helps monitor who the homeowner is renting to. And also, my particular homeowner purchased their house in January, rehabilitated the upstairs. It's a two-family, so the upstairs unit is the second and third floor with five bedrooms, and then the first floor with two bedrooms. It makes a lot more sense to rent it as a summer rental with five bedrooms than it does an annual rental. And they've been very, very strict in not renting to a group of adults under 30. They strictly are only renting to families. And that's something that I've been enforcing as a real estate agent. And I think if we express what the paradigm is in Asbury Park, that we don't want a bunch of 20-somethings coming here and renting houses, we want it to be for families or responsible adults, and we spread that word, and the real estate agents enforce it and also inform people who come to invest in Asbury Park, they'll, they'll understand. I think with rules and, and with that vision expressed, I think that we can keep a handle on it, because there's a lot of homes that still need to be purchased and rehabilitated. And if you make it difficult for an investor to purchase because of all these strict rules, they're not going to do it. They're not going to come here, they're not going to buy the houses, and we're not going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close public session?
Move it.
Second. On favor.
Just to clarify, Phyllis, my understanding of the reading of the ordinance, and this is why I'm glad this is just the first reading, is that two families fine if the owner lives in it, right? You're saying the owner does not live in any part of it, and that's the problem?
Yeah, it's not practical for a homeowner, investor, to live in if they're buying it as an investment.
We have three sets of minutes tonight. June 13, 2006 workshop meeting, June 15, 2016 executive session, and June 15, 2016 regular meeting. Have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move it.
Move it.
On favor?
Unlike.
All opposed? Move on to consent agenda. The first resolution is 2016-263. Appointments to the Business Committee. The people who are appointed through this resolution would be Marilyn Schlossbach, which would be the mayor's appointment, Adam Nelson, the mayor's appointment, Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, council representative, Jackie Pappas, Chamber of Commerce representative, Michael Capabianco, city manager, Jen Hampton, Parlor Gallery, Bianca Freda, Interwoven, Larry Stein, Appliance Brokers, Kathy Kelly, Paranormal, Leslie Castellini, Castellini's Acupuncture, Russell Lewis, Woodmark, Reggie Flimlin, Juice Basin, Jackie Sharp, Purple Glaze Donuts, Larry Denbrough, the Asbury Hotel, Phyllis Butida Mafucci, Conover Agency, and Isaac Jones, New Light Barber Shop. The next resolution is 2016-75, approving special events applications.
I have a question, I'm sorry. I thought we, it says the term to expire 12/31/16. I thought we said since it's almost July, we said maybe it's 17.
I sent an email today. I don't know if you guys got it.
Okay, I did. I can revise that. That's not a problem.
Okay, yes. Why appoint somebody for five months?
Although, you know what? Appointing somebody for five, if they don't show up in five months, then we can appoint somebody in their place in 2017.
You can throw them off if they don't show up. Whatever you want to do. I just...
Okay, all right. Put them in 2017.
Resolution 2016-275, approving special events wedding applications as presented this evening, June 29, 2016. Resolution 2016-276, resolution authorizing the payment payroll in the amount of $954,298.61. Resolution 2016-277, resolution to credit sewer account for 1211 Third Avenue, Block 2205, Lot 8. Resolution 2016-278, award of contract for regional contribution agreement project 110 Monroe Avenue. And 2016-279, ratifying phone poll for extending the Sunset Avenue Bridge bid opening until July 12, 2016. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Individual resolutions. The first one is 2016-80, 280, authorizing approval to add signatories to the city bank accounts. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-281, resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $517,305.62. Mayor Moore advised me that he will be extending from account number 6-01-23-220-000-209. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore with your abstention?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-282, resolution for the emergency temporary appropriation to amend 2016 temporary budget. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton? Abstain. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016- Resolution 2016-283, excuse me. Resolution, the city of Asbury Park making application to New Jersey Local Finance Board pursuant to NJSA, oh, excuse me, 48:3-1 SSEC, and previous approvals by said board. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions?
Yes. No comments or questions. I'm sorry. Anything else?
Jump ahead there. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-284, resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $7 million tax anticipation notes of 2016 in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-285, authorizing a lien on Block 3105, Lot 6, 574 Cookman Avenue. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Question. Okay, so this is the old Leggett's Pharmacy, Cookman and Emory, where the building's not safe, and the owner does not want to fix it. So, the city's gonna fix it and put a lien on it.
Correct.
But we should also, if Brad has to do any legal work, everything should be legal.
Yes.
Not just the construction, anything, everything to do with this, since the owner won't not step up and take responsibility for his own building.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure all bills, it's like an escrow, it's gonna go, we'll pay, but it goes on his lien.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-286, authorizing the purchase of a DPW paint machine. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-287, authorizing purchase of John Deere 323 loader. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-288, authorizing the purchase of John Deere 524 loader. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Question.
What's the loader?
What's the difference between the 323 and the 524?
Eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand dollars, and the 524 is a large-scale loader that has the big bucket on it that you would see at a normal construction site. We use that for putting in salt into trucks, moving sand on the beach. The 323 is a smaller skid steer. Removing snow. The 323 is a smaller skid steer. It is, almost looks like a little Bobcat, but it has tread, not tires. It'll be able, for us to move things on and off the beach, again, for sand. It has a snow blower attachment, so we'll be able to do smaller places like sidewalks. We won't have a person standing there with a shovel or a snow blower. We'll be able to blow it out through that. It's much more maneuverable machine. For example, DPW is really excited to start using it to get behind some people's properties. One of the issues that we have is we, is when we have an abandoned property that we get a call on, we can't get into a backyard, but with the skid steer, it's smaller, we can get in there and actually cut brush. So, it's a multipurpose machine, small versus big.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-289, authorizing the purchase of a generator. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Question. Does this include installation?
The price includes installation, concrete pad, removal of everything internally, a midnight or late-night switch-over, so it doesn't interfere with police operations. It is soup to nuts, the entire city hall, installation, removing of equipment. It's everything.
What percentage of the building will now be online with this generator?
100%.
Including council chambers?
The entire building. Right now, approximately 55, 65% of the police department is, and nothing else. It makes no sense when you do this to separate panels. It's easier and more economical to do the entire building all at once. All HVAC, elevator, everything will work.
Was there more than one bidder?
This is a state contract price for 230,000. Looking at other pricing per kilowatt, it's below what we would pay if we went out to bid on it. It's a good price.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmembers?
How bad do we need it?
We don't have one. If we have a power outage, the police department goes down.
I mean, remember Sandy? It was a disaster.
Yeah, the police, and it will also allow for other things. When we need warming or cooling stations, we can use this room. The emergency command center was run out of here, which you couldn't run when there was no generator. It's something that is much, much needed here. And before you start talking, I just caught you. One of the things that we're gonna explore is the generator we have here to move it over to the senior center, if it still is capable. But the odds are against it, but we are gonna look to see the size of it. It'll be close.
Does our fire department have a generator?
Yep.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-290, authorizing the purchase of a fueling system. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
What is it?
Make sure, go ahead.
Currently at DPW, everything is kept by hand. When the school or any other entity needs to use fuel from us, they actually have to write in a ledger book. What this will do is force people to enter a code mileage. We'll be able to track mileage, who's using what. Right now, we're on the honor system. This has been needed for probably 25 years.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-291, authorizing the purchase of a fire official vehicle. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Question. And it's not just about this vehicle. It's about the previous trunks and the future cars or SUVs. They're coming with soup to nuts, which they should, but I agree. Why not put in the GPS now?
For the cars?
Yeah.
It's gonna get done in the fall, once we get the full budget adopted. That's why it's just not here. We still have some cars that need to be added. The police department's getting their quote now, so it's gonna be in the fall, once we get everything added. That's, and it's $20. A hundred, no, I'm sorry. It's $20 a month. It's $80 to install. It's gonna come just once we get the full budget adopted.
Okay, but there's a ton of money left over this. All these vehicles are coming out of a bond ordinance, so it's not like we're just taking the money out of.
Current fund. No, it'll be charged to the capital accounts. When we can charge it to capital, we'll get charged to capital. These will have.
It'll be easier to do it now, though. Yeah. I mean, just because you're buying a, what, a 2017 Ford, and then you're spending $5,000 for wireless communications, $4,000 for lights, $2,000 for a radio, blah, blah, blah. Why not just put in the GPS at the same time?
Because we need possession of it. That's why. It's not done by, at the factory level. It's done on our level. So, once we get the car, then we can install the GPS.
And all these other things are being done at the factory level?
These are done here. But the GPS, we don't need to do council resolutions for either.
The sooner the better for every vehicle to have GPS. I agree with Jared.
These two vehicles that are being replaced, the fire official and the building department, are the last of the 10-year-old Durangos, which are experiencing engine and transmission problems. So, they had to go. We're gonna keep them in active duty, but we don't know how long they're gonna last. We're just gonna run them to the ground.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-292, authorizing the purchase of a vehicle for the building department. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-293, resolution accepting bid for the sale of certain real property, which is no longer needed for public use, Block 1003, Lot 68, 1413 and a half, Springwood Avenue. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-294, authorizing change order number three for Springwood Avenue Park. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
I'm recommending that this be tabled. There was a new price that came in, and I don't like it. It's too high. I believe that it should be lowered, so this resolution should be tabled, or just withdrawn.
Move it.
Second.
On favor? All opposed? Resolution 2016-295, resolution approving certain liquor licenses for 2016, 2017 licensing years. The licensing establishments on this resolution would be Cookman Restaurant Group LLC, AP Restaurant One, doing business as Stella Marina, Raspberry Moon Inc., doing business as Moonstruck Restaurant and Lounge, Asbury Equity Liquors LLC, doing business as Pascal and Sabine, Siri Sawachi Inc., doing business as Maco Main, John Teza, doing business as Press Room and Fish, Steinbach Liquor License LLC, doing business as Seafood Boney Reed, and House of Independence LLC, doing business as Beer Garden. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-296, a resolution approving liquor license with special conditions for DB Ventures LLC, doing business as Johnny Max for 2016, 2017 licensing year. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-297, a resolution approving liquor license with special conditions for Porta, Asbury Park LLC, doing business as Porta, for the 2016, 2017 licensing year. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-298, resolution amending temporary appropriations for 2016.
Motion to table. We have nothing doing.
No.
Table.
Do we have a handout?
No.
Table.
Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
On favor? All opposed? Resolution 2016-299, authorizing the purchase of a 2017 Mack GU 432 cab and chassis and dump and body with plow. This resolution was provided to you this evening. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions, please?
Yeah, no big deal. The fourth warehouse says rewarding purchase of the loader. I think it should be changed to truck.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2016-28, bond ordinance, providing for Fourth Avenue improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2,700,000, therefore, including a grant, expected to be received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation in the amount of $342,247, and authorizing the issuance of $2,700,000 in bonds and notes of the city to finance a part of the cost thereof. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for July 13, 2016. Ordinance 2016-29, establishing a restricted. Establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at property located at 1109 Grand Avenue, designated as Block 3401, Lot 8, in the city of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for July 13, 2016. Ordinance 2016-30, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 12-8.1 entitled Summer Rental Defined of Section 12-8 Summer Rental Regulations of Chapter 12, Building Into Construction of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Yes, this is the first reading.
Yes, it's the first reading.
I think we're all gonna be doing a lot of reading and asking questions. So, at the next meeting, you may wanna have the department heads here beforehand. Just because some good points were brought up tonight, and it's new to all of us, so there will be questions.
Public hearing is scheduled for July 13, 2016. Now, on to second reading, public hearing for ordinance 2016-27, and ordinance amending and supplementing Section 7-20 in total, One Way Streets to Chapter 7 Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to open 2016-27 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Hello, Warner Baumgartner. I'm glad you've corrected the language in order to get Sunset Avenue in its entirety. But I do question the preamble to this whole thing, that states that it's at the request of the Asbury Park Police Department for safety purposes. Maybe that's a legal technicality that has to be in there, but I think the public really should know that these streets are being changed because that is the guide of the redevelopment plan.